With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, you may be seated. Well Jenny, I'm gonna let you talk about the successful performance with Tri-Apps since I was out of town. So I, Megan, if you wanna share, if you wanna come up and share and introduce your actors and actresses and...
Okay. So, my name's Megan Allen and I am the choir and drama teacher at the high school. I co-directed the show The Murder Mystery at The Murder Mystery with Brenda Christman, not Christman, I know her as Brenda Christman. Sorry. Yeah, Brenda McLean. And The Murder Mystery at The Murder Mystery was a different kind of show because the kids were on the eve of a production that they were putting on, putting a little English on it, and so they had to have British accents for part of the show. Bad British accents. And then they had to flip their character and be a normal sounding person. And they had to do this multiple times, so it was kind of like Groundhog Day. So they would have to constantly go back and forth between the British accent and the regular accent. I call Alex Porterfield Taco because in his character, he kept asking, can I go to the taco truck? I need, is it a taco break? I'm hungry. So why don't you show them what you particularly did almost the entire show? Can you show them on the ground what you did almost the entire show? And he had to stay awake for it. So, the kids, there would be a blackout and somebody would die from a fire poker, so we would have to have them lie flat and have a fire poker sticking out of, under their arms and they had to stay still the whole time. So Jesse Smith is the person that was the playwright, so he came in a little bit later on in the show and he kinda had to have an alter ego. So he, the first part, he was nice.
Yes.
And kind of wondering, what are all these crazy people on the ground for? I didn't write them in the show. But then when he came back again, he had to be kind of an alter ego and be kind of whimsical but kind of mean. And can you show them your slow motion scene? Like how you had to walk? How did you have to walk in between people?
How I have to walk in between people? Well, I would start over here, I would snap like so.
And then he, like their arms are sticking out and he would have to go through. And this is showing Brenda and I's age. The second that I saw this, I said, we have to do chariots of fire in the background. And of course, the kids had no idea what I was talking about.
I did.
So most of them were like, what is that? And I said, your parents and grandparents are gonna get it, slow motion, it's chariots of fire. So that's what we did.
Great gag.
We had a successful run. I believe the first night we had over a hundred and thirty some people. Second night, it was a little bit more than that, so it was a success. I mean, we're very proud of the kids and we would like to thank everyone for their support. And I can't tell you what the musical is yet because it's a surprise, but that will be coming with some trivia leading up to revealing it, so.
Congratulations to all of you. I know how hard your job is, oh my goodness, and I know how hard you have to work to get your parts right and make sure you're on cue and such, but congratulations, it sounds like it was a great event.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you all. You guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but I'm sure you have pressing things to do, like homework or your rides here, I don't know, okay. At this point, we need to recess the regular board meeting. Do we have to vote on that? Or I just announce? All right, we don't do this stuff. Okay, and now we will open the public hearing on the lease. These documents were posted online and this is for public comment, so at this time, we will open the floor to any comments from any member of the community. Don't all speak at once, it makes it hard to hear. Anyone else? Being that there are no patrons here, we missed comment on this, I think we could go ahead and follow along with the action item and that is to adopt the projected resolution. Wait, I'm on the wrong page, sorry.
Scott, do you have Zoom pulled up on your computer?
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anybody who was online that...
There is none.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there is no public hearing, so we'll move on to adopting the project resolution, which was also posted online.
Yeah.
I want to look online.
Yep, no, you're right. And here's the resolution.
Got it, no, I got it. Okay.
No, you're correct.
Okay, these resolutions have been printed online and available to the community and to any one of you who likes to dig deep into the bowels of the agenda. You can find these at your leisure, but if you have any questions or concerns, otherwise, we are not required to read them. Anybody who's dying to hear them. So we will skip that little process and the first one is the project resolution and it's the whereas's and the what for that we're resolved. The estimated on hand of soft cost for the project are five million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars. And we also have a lease rental in there for three hundred eleven thousand, fifty dollars. We're resulting in six million, one hundred five dollars, so one hundred five thousand dollars, excuse me. Any questions? We will, I will entertain a motion that we approve this resolution as presented.
Some moves.
Thank you Jenny.
One second.
Thank you Stephen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Part B, adopt a resolution authorizing execution of the lease. We just made it, now we're gonna shoot it. Okay, no, I'm good. All right. Again, the whereas's and wherefores are all available for public reading and visiting if anyone is so inclined. Are there any questions or concerns? We are authorizing the execution of the lease and sale of real estate. Any questions or concerns? And that's where we made the merger with the two parcels, is that correct Jenny? With the...
That's not what this would be for.
Okay.
This is just the lease segrado, which...
Oh, that we're gonna lease some property?
Correct. Let me say required property tax.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions other than me? All right. I will entertain a motion that we approve the second resolution. Resolution B, I'm sorry. Mark?
Second.
Thank you Ethan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Resolution C, resolution assigning construction bids and contracts once received. We're gonna get a project done, we're gonna have somebody do it. So we will be able to open that or begin to open that for bidding.
Correct, so the plan in regards to this is to have Tierney Thornsbury come to our next study session and show you where we are in the plans and the design process and answer any questions that you might have at that time. After that, he anticipates sending these out to bid sometime in December. We have to publicly post those and let contractors know. And then I will be sure to include you on communication in regards to the opening of those bids. Those are public openings, they happen here in this room. And then even at that point in time, it doesn't mean that it's a done deal. We will bring those bids back to the board, share with you what all of the bids were, why we elected to, or why we're recommending the bid that we are recommending. So we will continue to keep you looped throughout that process. This is just to allow us to continue to engage in that process and get the ball rolling and bring it back to you.
Questions, comments?
So to follow up on what you just said, I was initially gonna ask Lauren about that very last sentence, that the bids and contracts related to the project are handed over to Building Corporation. So that means therefore they're the ones that are overseeing the project. Is that, is that, am I reading that correctly?
The bond proceeds are held by a bank to be doled out to the contractors. Tierney Thornsbury is technically the project manager overseeing the actual day-to-day construction and progress.
But then the bids and the contracts, if I'm reading this right, says that the Building Corporations are the ones that are, even though they're gonna stay in contact with us, they're the ones that are making the decisions, correct?
The, right, the bids are submitted to the Building Corporation.
Right, yeah.
But then it has to come to us before it's finalized?
Correct, as a school board.
Okay.
Okay. And Stephen, I appreciate you asking questions. I think in the nine years that I've been in this seat, this is maybe the second time that we've gone through the entire process, so there, it can get very tedious. As Amber and Lauren will share.
Well Amber said everything's been fine.
Anything else from any member of our assembled group? If not, we'll entertain a motion that we approve the resolution assigning construction bids and contracts once received.
So moved.
Thank you Ethan.
Second.
Thank you Mark. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. And the fourth one, adopt a resolution approving amendment, first amendment to the master disclosure. That is so redundant, I'm not even sure what it means. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so the Securities and Exchange Commission requires that a school corporation enter into a first amendment to the master continuing disclosure before it issues bonds. The school corporation has previously entered into this type of agreement. It requires that the school corporation agree to timely provide certain financial information to the SEC's Emma database and provide notice of any material events.
All right. Clear as mud, no, I got it, I understood.
The SEC just needs some crediting.
Okay. All right. So again, this has been made available and has to do with staying legal as we go through the bond process, so are there any questions or concerns about that? And no, any comments from Gallery? I will entertain a motion at this time. Stephen?
Second.
Thank you, Stephen and Jenny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you all. And then we move on to adjourn the public hearing on the lease. I'm gonna say, okay, we're gonna do that, all right. And then we open a public hearing for RCA agreement and contract terms. Jenny, anything else about that?
Well, I know that Jen, Helen, Hope, Shaw, you're here, I don't know if you wanna share any comments at this time or...
I think we're good, it's a good contract.
Okay. So again, this is a public hearing and we are open for public comments and discussion regarding the newly ratified contract for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Before we move forward, I would like to thank Katie and Lauren and Cassie Murphy did a wonderful job. Kathy Adams was a tremendous asset in the office, continuing to run numbers. I wanna thank Jenny and Hope, there were, there was a lot of communication at the table. There was communication between buildings through emails, through text messages. I think it was Hope that shared last time, it was the first for Jenny to lead the group. It was first for your representative to be here. It was first for Kathy to run data. We didn't, Todd has been in and out of the office area, so I just wanna thank you for that continued collaboration, the communication, the integrity and honesty going back and forth. It's a vital, vital part of this and it's what makes this district work, so thank you. I don't think anybody appreciates the time that is spent on it until you live in the role and sit at the table and understand that it doesn't just happen, so thank you. And Megan, I know you were at the table too, so thank you for your support in that as well.
Anything from the public? There are no, no comments from the community, then we need to vote on approving the adoption of the RCA agreement and the contract terms for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Anybody like to make a motion?
Some moved.
Jenny?
Sir.
And Mark? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. We now adjourn the public hearing on the contract and resume the regular board meeting. But first, we'll pause for station itemification. I don't know why I sound like I need to do that. That dates some of us, but that's okay. Resuming the regular board meeting, first we will take a look at approval of the minutes from October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. We have about four of those here. Also, approval of the minutes from November seventh, twenty-twenty-three, regular meeting. Approval of the November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three trustee's regular meeting and approval of the minutes from the November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three public hearing. Did you all read through those? Jenny, you are usually the one to do it with a fine teeth comb, anything to...
Amber and I chatted, it was just on the study session, making sure that the people in attendance at the top and those are listed. She went, she said she's already done it. As this meeting has started, has made sure all of our admin team were listed. They were listed in the body, but not in the...
Okay.
That's all I had.
It's just a technical correction.
Yes.
Any questions on any of those other than that? Thank you Jenny for taking care of that. I really do.
And it's an important part, there are times that we have to go back and access those. I know that it is nice to have those and make sure they're accurate, so I appreciate the communication.
If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of those four meetings as presented.
With corrections, right?
With corrections.
So moved.
Thank you Ethan.
Second.
And Jenny.
All right.
Moving on, we have the... Oh yeah, we should all need to vote. I can't, I just wanna be done on me, okay, all those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. I'm actually right down on someone, we have to vote, okay. Moving on, we have the financial report and we all get a copy of that. And at this point, education fund is at six hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and eighty-five cents. Debt service is one million, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. And the operations fund is one million, two thousand dollars, or two thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. Did I get them wrong?
Yeah, I have the education fund as nine hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I looked at the wrong column.
Appropriations, I think is what you were reading.
What was it?
Nine...
In the graphics.
Nine million, four hu... Nine hundred...
That'd be nice.
Nine hundred and forty, yeah. Nine hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Well, thank you, I did, I just copied off the wrong line there.
Excuse me, aren't we just doing September? Since that's what I wrote.
Well, usually we should do Oct... They filled it in for October, but the year-over-year analysis is September, but I'm assuming that's because of the absences in the department.
Yeah, and also on the operations fund, we have not asked to transfer. But in that, and Amber, I may rely on you to help as well, we found in communications where not all of the invoices had been submitted to insurance in regards, and there's about three hundred and some thousand dollars, almost four hundred thousand. So Denise and Amber spent maybe three entire days communicating with insurance to make sure all of the paper trail was submitted. Todd in his absence had communicated, had opened up the claim, had started the process, but Denise and Amber carried that to the finish line last week. So that is, that is part of this. The other part of this is we've not sought our S R reimbursement. Denise is working on understanding how to get those funds back and Todd communicated today, so those are in there. So looking at this, I'm not as overly concerned with operations as I was this summer when we did this. And part of this is, and I appreciate the board's support and you're welcome to ask Amber questions as well, is getting caught up in some of the things, especially reimbursements, that Todd had started the process on in good faith, but just wasn't able to complete those. We didn't understand completely where he was in the process until we started the deeper guide and the communications and of course, he has a felt ball. So I, I am not as concerned about this fund report as I was in the summer. Obviously, something to watch and to monitor and to understand, but working with Denise and with Amber and their hard work, I see this rectifying itself rather quickly. Okay, thank you.
The next item on the claims and payroll, or excuse me, on this financial report is the approval of claims totaling eight hundred forty-three dollars, eight hundred forty-three thousand dollars, four hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents. We also have approval of payroll for November third and November seventeenth totaling nine hundred twenty thousand, four hundred five dollars and seventy-one cents. Any questions? At this point, I would entertain a motion that we approve all the, all of the financial report claims and payroll.
Some moved.
And Stephen, second?
I'll say.
Yeah. You gotta talk, honey. You can wave at me all day, but it doesn't count till you say something.
I was waiting for you to finish your train.
Okay. So we have Jenny and Stephen. Again, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Approval of the final rating of Bylaw, zero-one-six-four-point-five-zero. And this will be the final one, which means we need to vote, so any questions on that? Anything you need to share, Jenna?
I don't believe so. I guess there are questions or concerns.
All right. At this time, I would accept a motion that we move forward with a vote. Thank you Mark.
I'll say.
Thank you Stephen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. And approval of district employee raises and pipeline.
So as we enter into this, Kathy Adams spent a great deal of time running different scenarios, understanding that we are in a position now where it's necessary to keep up with even fast food restaurants and, and the concern in that area. So starting the baseline at fourteen dollars and then making those incremental jumps will allow for, allow for us, I think, to be competitive with local businesses and to draw in those employees that we desperately need, especially in the area of maintenance and IAs. Did look at increasing the substitute pay, which brings us, I think, closer in alignment with what other districts are doing. I do have an overall estimated cost to the entire, well, I broke it down by all of the proposed increases. I think I also have it just by, oh, I have it broken down by different departments. If you'd like for me to read through the cost increases by, by department.
I would be interested in that.
Okay. Right now for...
And this is just the impact of the pipeline raises, not of any of the other?
Right, there's, I've got the totals as well for all that we, if you're interested in this.
All, including admin and teacher, and the CBA as well?
The overall increase to all, to all pipelines, to all recommendations, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars to education fund, knowing that three hundred and twenty-seven thousand of that is new lennies coming in with A D M enrollment. And then to operations, a little over a hundred and thirty thousand. And did speak extensively to the team and with Denise in regards to a plan to provide appropriations by building level to help them, help us in regards to that. And the team can share how that they'd like to help with that.
Well Ben, I, if you, since you had those overall, that was what was most important to me. Obviously, if other court members want the specifics by department, then go for it, but that was what I was interested in, thank you. Yes.
Okay, any questions on approval of the district employee raises and pipeline?
I think I just have just a couple small ones and it's probably just because I don't know all the technicals of the job descriptions, but some of them, you're like technician versus head technician. Is there, like what's the, since head technician's being paid less on the pipeline, I didn't know what that was about.
Oh, she should have flipped those.
Are those backwards, okay.
They are.
Okay. That makes a little more sense to me.
That's something that we talked about in regards to that, I apologize.
And then further down, I didn't know, this one's definitely just that I don't know what the technical job descriptions differences are, but all the other under words, special needs I A, intense needs I A, the title one I A. A lot of those are on the same, and then special needs has a weird spike in the middle, even though they're roughly the same in that first chunk, and it's a pretty substantial jump. And so I didn't know if that, like, to me, when I read it, again, this is again a job description thing, intense needs seems like if one of those categories is gonna be higher. Intense sounds like it would be the one higher, but it's probably just 'cause I don't know what they mean by special needs I A.
Can you go through the differentials?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up here.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding something.
Are you at the bottom of page one?
Yeah.
So intense needs I A is someone that works with severe behaviors or in our developmental preschool or in our life skills classroom.
Okay.
Special needs I A are all the rest.
Okay.
For special ed.
For special ed. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Was that, there were just those two, right?
Right, yeah, right.
Title one is for, obviously, title one, because of the different fund.
So then I guess just over the intense needs, what's the like seventy cent difference for special needs?
I don't know that I have an answer for you. I'll have to dig deeper. I don't know if those need to be flipped. I know we built this off of our last pipeline.
Is there no one that's currently in there that would, that falls, like, are there no employees that fall in that for the intense needs? And maybe that's why it wasn't adjusted?
I thought it was, it was similar to.
I think that we just went down.
And that's what each column over.
I understand.
We just went, we just went down to one category for everybody.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
So we wouldn't be using that line item?
Correct.
Do you want to share that? That, that excludes it.
So we just went, instead of trying to differentiate between the two, because obviously all their jobs are hard.
Right.
We just went to one, so everybody's getting the same. So I'm not sure which line it is, but.
Okay.
So we, well, my line, I may be at the top.
So intense needs may not have been adjusted hardly at all anymore?
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you, Jenna. Good question. Yeah, that helps along.
I just seen a couple of spots.
Yep.
I didn't, it was just the job description thing, or it was a numbers thing.
Okay. Any other questions on approval of district employee raises and pipeline? I will accept a motion that we move on that.
I'll move.
Steven?
Second.
Jenny? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
Can you guys?
So I'm sorry.
Making that motion with the amendments that you discussed?
Oh, we're ready to go. Can we back up? Amendment to the motion? We need to make an amendment to that motion, that motion, not a motion.
Well, and I, can we further clarify that this will go into effect tomorrow morning? Once the board approves it, the only threshold would be with the contracts for teachers and the possibility of the administrative contracts. But this would go into, into effect starting tomorrow's hourly wages.
So this classified pipeline, effective as of November twenty-first, with the adjustments, including clearing, cleaning up that special needs, intense I A, and the head technician?
Yep, technician, yep, thank you. That's my motion.
There.
Do we have a second to Jenny's?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero again. Okay. And moving on. Approval of transportation recommendations for increases in training and maintenance, hourly pay, E C A field trip pay.
So Kevin shared this with me and he's been so patient. Kevin may call on you to answer some questions. But this was his proposal in July. I think, Kevin, you met with the transportation, with the drivers, and, and this was what they were requesting. And able to, um, this was prior to Todd's absence, was able to work with him in regards to this and the overall impact to the operations fund with the help of the administrative team and the department heads. I don't believe we're gonna have any concerns in regards to answering this request from Kevin.
So this was also included in the operations fund number that you gave us?
Correct. The only thing I excluded would have been Wendy's department with food service, and that's an independent. Because that's a whole other, exactly. But I can tell you the overall of that as well.
No, both.
Operations. So yes, that was in my overall figures.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the transportation recommendations from Kevin and Jenna? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
And again, these would go into effect tomorrow.
So move.
Thank you, Ethan.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Approval of the contract employee salary proposal toward Mrs. Dance.
So these, well, most of these are contracted employees, speech and language pathologists. They have been pulled from the collective bargaining unit, but would like to match those what we're paying teachers in regards to years of experience and then the bump over to the masters, because each of the speech and language pathologists would carry a master's degree. Department heads, a thirty-two-hundred-dollar increase, and those have been figured in. I met with Lisa McMillan, and we shared some different scenarios in regards to money. And what I felt limitations were in the operation fund. And what we came up with was amazingly, both what we had on pieces of paper to share. And so would propose that Lisa McMillan be our auditorium manager at twenty-five dollars per hour. And she would continue to keep a time card for that that would disseminate her hours. They are tracking that to make sure that we are also being fair to the community in regards to those who rent out the facility, those types of things. Using the current formula that was verbally agreed upon, and I spoke with the administrative team, these would be the current numbers for the administrative team. Knowing that moving forward, if the top end of the scale, so the, the formula that was built for the administrative team was that we would take the highest paid teacher's workday and then multiply that out towards the number of days that administrators work. There was also a line item for their being highly effective, effective, that we don't honor tag grant anymore. It's built into their, their teacher, or I'm sorry, their administrative contract. And then a percentage for years of experience. And so using that, I feel comfortable that this keeps us in alignment with other districts around us. I do know, I fear that if we continue down this path, depending on A D M and state funding and everything, that this is gonna grow at a rate that I'm not sure that we're going to be able to continue to keep up with. We're really gonna have to keep an eye on that and look at that moving forward, because it may not be able, be, be a funding formula that we're able to continue to keep up with. And I've spoken to the team in regards to that. Additional contracted employees would be Kathy Adams, Amy Bodie, Nathan Eckor, Brian Holcomb, and Marshall Worland, our adjunct teachers, wanting to honor their work, years of experience and the careers that they have. But they wouldn't fall on that teacher salary line, so had to pull them out for consideration as well on this. And then Amber, her increase in pay, she's completed the majority of her work towards her certifications through I A S B and want to recognize that dedication and what she's learned through that process and certifications that we've asked her to, to obtain.
Congratulations.
One more.
All of those are figured into the overall numbers as well.
It, when we, when we began with the formula, it, it seemed like the right thing to do. But I understand where she's coming from in terms of making sure we don't continue in a snowball type fashion. But we also want to make sure that our administrators are well-paid and that we are competitive with areas schools. And hopefully, everybody's pretty happy.
And I do, I don't want to, I don't want anybody to misunderstand, and I don't think the team does. I very much appreciate their help and their support. It's just, as I explained, to the T, the classroom association as well. Teachers in the association get to advocate for the teachers group. And I appreciate the board and, and this, this group and that formula advocating for administrators, recognizing administrators and the work that they do. It's not just a seven forty-five to three o'clock job. And recognizing that my concern is for the overall fiscal responsibility of the district that as we move forward, we're really going to have to watch and see if that formula is one that we can live with or if we need to come up with some other way to compromise and support those contracted employees.
Any questions?
Okay. How many, for our speech and language pathologists?
We have.
How many do we have?
We have two right now. But are short one person. And we need, I know Jen's been working at that, and it's a contracted.
Now, this is in addition to the, the online resource that we're using?
Correct.
And then how many department heads do we actually have?
So we have Scott Kissler, Wendy Bowers, Doug Bowers, Kevin Rainey. And again, those numbers are broken out between operations and education. Wendy's would not be in those overall numbers that I gave to you, as hers comes out of a totally separate budget item. Anyone else?
Another question. You give us weekly notes and updates, which keep us involved and know what's going on. Do you receive from your admin team or your head, your department heads, weekly notes? I know that you are in constant conversation with them, but the last, probably the last month, I feel that your plate has become increasingly. So just having something for you to reference to or to follow up with.
So let my team speak. We try to meet once a week. I think they will share with you. I'm available all the time by phone, and they keep me looped. I don't want to step on their toes. I know that Doug and Wendy and Kevin, it's probably a little bit harder to track me down, but would like to think that I respond to phone calls and emails as quickly as I can, but try to have as much of an open door as possible. Team, I don't know if anybody wants to jump in?
Yeah, I mean, we also, like, we all send weekly reports to our teams, our schools, and she's looping on all those. The main events going on every week, it's all that kind of stuff. But I, if I need to communicate anything to her, I just call her. She's always available, or I text, and she calls me back. And I, I've never had any issues with, you know, communication and, um.
She still brings up a really good point. But the department has seen it, and I can start including you, was that every Friday afternoon, I try to send my week at a glance so that they know more so what my availability is. I think it helps probably more within the administrative office. And Amber and Kathy and what they're doing and trying to track me down. But every Friday afternoon, and Scott gets that, the directors get that, what my week looks like the next week, so that if they have pressing issues, they can kind of balance their calendar with my calendar and know when the door's gonna be open. But I would like to think, not always readily available, but I'd like to think I'm always right there with the team.
The less I have to talk to you, the better. I don't mean that personally. If I, if I keep going out, I'm getting a hold of her during the week, it's usually a pretty good week.
Good questions. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else before we vote on this issue? Okay, so it reads that we approve the contract employee salary proposal per Mrs. Dance.
And I, these we would anticipate with the teacher's contract being the second pay of December. What throws us off, the first pay of December, is the shortened week right now. And behind the scenes, we are already doing those time cards and doing the transfer between banks for next week's payroll. So the retro pay and everything would actually, for Kathy to enter all of that information and for us to make the transfer in time, would be the second pay of December, when retro pay would catch up on everything.
One more question.
Okay, sure.
What's the, what's the percentage increase that our admins are receiving?
It's, I don't know that I figured it out by percent. I know it's greater than three percent, but because we started there, I don't have a five percent. I apologize. I just did hard numbers.
You said it was based on, I mean, there's years of experience, but it's just based on the daily of the highest teacher multiplied out by?
So the formula has the highest, so we take a teacher, the highest paid teacher run, divide that out by a hundred and eighty-five days, and that gives you your daily rate for the administrative formula. We plug that in, then if it's highly, if they're highly effective, they have a five hundred dollar added line item. If they're effective, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar line item. And then for years of experience, it's a percentage, like, for two years of experience, they get half of that. So it's point zero one, I think.
I'd have to look at it. It's been a long time since.
Seventeen, seventeen, yeah.
As they're, as another factor, and that gets us the bottom line number. And then they know, teachers, I have still not heard anything in regards to the tag grant funds coming into the district. Amber hasn't tracked anything. I don't know. Hope if you received anything from the association. So the, the other thing, Steven, and for those new, the teachers will get a one-time tag grant funds from the state. It doesn't impact, our education funded is grant money that comes in, and we disperse that out as well. Administrators know that they, there was a time when we gave that to them as well. But rather than do that, it's figured in with their overall contract amount and divvied up over the course of twenty-six pays.
And what does tag stand for?
Teacher appreciation grant funds.
And, and teachers who are needs improvement or ineffective do not receive any runs from that?
That is correct. That would be the, that would be the same with teacher or administrative contracts as well. But they were not highly effective or effective, they would not be eligible for the raises or the tag grant.
Is that rating or evaluation over the teachers comes from the building administrator?
That is correct.
And for the administrators, it comes from Jenna?
Correct. Well, for the head principals and directors, for assistant principals, it comes from your principal.
Clear as mine?
And where is our current enrollment numbers?
Fifteen oh five.
Fifteen oh five? And that is pre to twelve, or is that just kindergarten?
Kindergarten to twelve. We don't get, we see funding for preschool at this point in time.
What had you projected budgeted?
We had budgeted for fourteen fifty-five.
Any other questions? And I appreciate the questions. They made good sense.
They're good.
They make good sense. We just forget because we've been doing it, so.
Well, and, I mean, everybody knows it, but the school board, we're the elected people. And, you know, we have to be held accountable to our taxpayers when we're, we're stoned, and so.
I got a phone call earlier this afternoon.
I got multiple phone calls today. Zero.
I know, nobody's.
Let me give you my air number. It's out there. What about athletic director? I don't see that one.
That is correct.
That is a hourly position, correct?
No, it's a contracted position.
Oh, gotcha.
I was coming on our site, on our contracts, like, all of them but your Jan's is updated.
Well, that's.
Or not updated.
Well, they wouldn't be updated until approval tonight.
Like, I'm seeing yours all the way up through the twenty-third of June. But then when you go to the print, other admins or anybody else's, it's the one clear back, it ends in the twenty, twenty-one.
We have that.
Has it changed since then?
That would have.
Because of the twenty-one to twenty-three contract?
Contract, they haven't changed since then.
Gotcha.
Any of this making sense, Steven?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. It, it was a well-thought-out plan in the beginning? We've spent weeks on it?
The, the, I appreciate the desire and the goal to make it more clear-cut. Because before this formula, it had been many, many years before there had been a formula. And so then it was kind of like, eh, that sounds good. I mean, it was more flawed than that, obviously. But, but that made it hard, and we ended up with a bigger gap in some areas than needed. And so making it more consistent was helpful. And I do think, though, that seeing in, in actual terms what that could look like forecasted out, it isn't necessarily a bad thing to look at reevaluating that formula, but.
Yes.
It was important to make sure that all of our administrators were being paid higher than our highest paid teacher because we did have before looking at the formula, administrators who were making less than teachers in actual numbers and definitely in per day numbers. So that's part of it too, because when you look at the CBA and you look at the, the salary schedule there, that's based on 185 days. And almost no one in this list works 185 days, their contracted days are more. And so therefore they will have a higher salary. So it is higher than the highest paid teacher because there's a little bit, an extra bump built in there. But taking the highest paid teacher and multiplying them out by 220 days would be a lot higher than the 72 or whatever that the highest paid assistant.
The other thing, when she said it's based on experience, it's based on administrative experience, it doesn't go back to their first term teaching. We just start with zero or one. Lori, I don't know, I don't know why you became principal at the high school, but I think you'd only had our vice, or assistant principal, but I think you would only been here one year when we introduced that new, new program. Or at least to get everybody, and you were a one, and I was like, really? I mean, because, I don't know. So, and then we have others with, Luke, how many years have you been principal?
This is.
Well, can, but had prior, previous schools as well.
Nine years then, I think, eight or nine.
Yeah. So, you know, so it does make a difference right there.
So you're talking about experience, overall experience, not just at Rochester?
As an administrator, right.
And that's how the CBA works as well. So if a teacher comes in and they taught somewhere else for 10 years, then they would not be on the year one or zero level, they'd be on the 10.
Good questions. Anything else? How?
Just to clarify, so back pay will now not be until the 15th, correct?
Correct. Because of the short week this week.
At this time, I would happily approve a motion or accept a motion. Yeah, we approve the contract employee salary proposal per Mrs. Vance.
And these will go retroactive to the beginning of their contracted year.
Correct. That's with the teachers.
So moved.
Second.
You do move that?
I did, I moved it.
Jenny, Jenny and Kevin, thank you. All right, all those in favor? And all those opposed, motion carries 42. Student and stakeholder focus donations. Do a nice list today. Columbia Elementary received $10 for school supplies in honor of Melissa Belpedio from an anonymous donor. Columbia Elementary received 107 backpacks and boxes of school supplies to students in need in honor of Melissa Belpedio, also anonymous. Columbia Elementary, unknown miscellaneous supplies for students. FC Full Town Retired Teachers Association, very nice. Riddle Elementary, $10, one school, one book, anonymous donor. Riddle Elementary, $50, coats for students in need. The Builders Association of Central Indiana. Riddle Elementary, $50, miscellaneous donation in memory of Ronnie Young. Rochester Middle School, Mrs. Brower's sixth grade science, unknown. Hidden figure set of 30 books for Mrs. Brower's science class from Sci-O-Zi Grant Award. RHS Choir, $30. Purpose for the RHS Choir from an anonymous donor. RHS Choir, $20, RHS Choir, another anonymous donor. RHS Drama and Choir, $200 from Hope and Ryan Shalley. Thank you, Mrs. Shalley. RHS FFA, $339.40. Cosgasko Community, Cosgasko County Community Foundation in memory of Sonya Easterday. Rochester High School Zebra Cafe, $95, and that is from the RHS staff. RHS Athletics, $53.04. Sportswear from Ohio Pie. Is that, am I saying that right? Ohio Pie. Okay, I don't know, you know what it is?
Shouldn't that be the Ohio Pie?
Just, you know, all of these donations are so worthwhile to all these groups. And I know if, you know, they're all valuable, it's things people can use, it's stuff they can use immediately if they have needs, et cetera. And we're just very grateful for all of that. It's nice to see our choirs and the arts being, being recognized. The, the donations in memory of Melissa Belpedio are amazing. And from, I didn't know her personally, but from what I've heard, she would have been delighted by all of this. So, anyway, and the Builders Association of Central Indiana, every school I've worked in, they just come in and say, who needs a coat, what size? And you make a list, and there you go. So we're very grateful for all of these donations. I will accept a motion that we accept these donations as read.
All set. So moved.
Thank you, Stephen. And a second, please?
Second, oh.
Janice.
Now it's competition, okay. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
And didn't, didn't you mention that one of our study sessions that a lot of the backpacks can endure for service?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's awesome. Pretty good.
The personnel report. At Columbia Elementary, Mary Amesquita, first grade instructional assistant, and she will begin at an hourly rate of $12.
14.
14.
Effective tomorrow. Just to clarify.
RMS Athletic Recommendations. Ryan Martin, sixth grade girls' assistant boys' basketball. Stipend. Savannah Stevens, RMS cheer coach, stipend. Abigail McCarter, volunteer swim coach. Lola Bradley, volunteer swim coach. Lindsay Bartz, volunteer swim coach. Billy Newton, volunteer sixth grade boys' basketball. Day McBeck, volunteer RHS wrestling. Abram Farara, volunteer RHS wrestling. Sarah Wilson, volunteer RHS wrestling. Jamie Howard, volunteer RHS wrestling. Hayden Prater, volunteer RHS wrestling. Drew Sailors, volunteer RHS wrestling. Noah Swango, volunteer RHS wrestling. Aaron Swango, volunteer RHS wrestling. Eli Swango, volunteer RHS wrestling. Dan Clark, volunteer RHS wrestling. Ethan, uh, Dan Clark, volunteer wrestling, I think I already just said that, okay. Ethan Holloway, volunteer RHS wrestling. Wade Schaefer, volunteer RHS wrestling. Grayson Gard, volunteer RHS wrestling. Jamie Keller, volunteer RHS wrestling. Jacob Schroeder, volunteer RHS wrestling. Marshall Fishback, volunteer RHS wrestling. Luke Smith, volunteer RHS basketball. Mike Malco, volunteer RHS boys' basketball. Corporation Maintenance Department. Brenda Denny, building tech, hourly rate now at $14, correct? Kenny Black, Kenneth J. Blackburn, maintenance department specialist, hourly rate $20. FMLA, Catherine Lindsay, from 10/19/23 to approximately 11/15/23. Resignation, Danielle Martinez, effective December 1st, 2023. Any questions or comments about the personnel report? If not, I'll accept a motion that we approve it as read.
So moved.
Thank you, Stephen.
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. And now we're up to superintendent business, what you got for us today, Jan?
Kevin Reynolds, do you mind starting us with a report from Transportation Department?
It's all, we've got, got the fleet ready for winter, we're gearing up for winters. Got the first load of winter blend fuel in, all buses have got it in by now. Not ready for the cold weather, but mother makes us bring it. Jan, I don't think you're ready for five o'clock phone calls. Gearing up for it, but the fleet's ready. The team's ready to tackle the elements, so we're all good.
Thank you, Kevin.
Believe we have all the winterization done for the corporation. And then maintenance staff, we're still looking for two employees, three, sorry. One, one building tech for middle school, a building tech for high school, and a building tech for Riddle. And we do have one interview tomorrow coming in for middle school building tech. But other than that, everything's in order as far as we can get it.
Thank you.
This month, we had our Veterans Dinner, which was a nice turnout on all locations. It was really, really, really nice. We also had the Kiwanis, and they had an increase to where they almost ran out of some of stuff. And I think I've been here like 14 years, and this is probably the first time that I've seen it get that low. So there was a really, really big bunch of orders. They had like 22 orders out of one family, 19 out of another, so it was really nice to see that start to increase again. We had our first drop from What Chef Wants, which is part of a grant for us to receive local produce. And that's within an Indiana area, so it could be from Ohio, Michigan, Kentucky, and Illinois. Beautiful, beautiful produce. We also had a major drop from our commodities. They opened our section late because there was a bug in a few school districts' claims, which we were one of them that had the bug. So it put three months hitting all of our locations all at once. I just redid with the state today. They have a form to where we can, when we process our free and reduced forms, it never becomes invalid. It's just they want to update it with, you know, as we're changing hands. So what it does is it allows a 10-day backdate on any applications. If we don't fill that out, then the day that we would get a free and reduced application in, that would be, and all the farther we could go with it. We couldn't go back and retroact and give the parents their payback. And I signed up for the 24-25 school year to do the DOD fresh produce program because it was such a good turnout with the What Chef Wants, I wanted to see what that was going to do as far as bringing fresh produce in with them, with our other commodities. And I have also signed up for the supply chain assistance funds. We will get a drop around February of '24. The minimum is $5,000, but right now they're estimating us at $45,500.
Any questions? All done? Lori, you're at the high school?
So, busy at the high school as always. So tonight before coming here, I was over at the Jag installation that Ashley Burris was doing with her kids. She was doing a really nice job. She had a good turnout from both, I think all of her students were there and then a lot of parents were there too. So it was really nice to see. I'm gonna reiterate everything Megan said about the fall play, it was fantastic, it was super fun. I took Alice to it, my fourth grader, and every time there was blackout, she'd be like, who do you think it was? Mom, this is gonna be dead this time. So we had a really fun time with that. It's very fun to just go see the talent that our kids have. And it's very obvious on the stage, but it's fun to know too that the talent at the sound booth and in the light booth and behind the stage is just as, just as awesome to know that our kids designed those lights and that they're running that soundboard that Oscar and I are not allowed to touch. We are not allowed to go anywhere near those buttons is really, really special. So it was fantastic, congratulations to Megan and Brendan and all of the kids. Winter sports have started. Girls' basketball is 2-0 in the conference, which is exciting. Girls' wrestling, which is an emerging sport, had 227 weigh-in and wrestle at the high school on Saturday. And I heard it was very exciting. Boys' basketball had their scrimmage in the other gym. And then swim for boys and girls has started as has bowling. We had three students last weekend do, perform in the district honor band. And then last week, our civil engineering and heavy equipment pathway had many excavators out at the sheriff's department, which was really cool. The first day, the kids were a little bit more intimidated by these machines. They're bigger and they have arms. I don't know what they're called, but they have arms that dig and you could tell the kids are a little bit more intimidated. But after doing it, then they become the experts, you know, they get out and they gotta tell the next person, oh gee, do it this way. It's really kind of fun to watch. We want to thank Chris Brown, Westside Tractor, New Holland, and of course the sheriff's department for their help with that. It's really, really neat. The, on Friday, a news station, the PBIS Education, PBS, not PBIS. PBS out of the W N I T station from South Bend came and, excuse me, interviewed Joel Lau and Oscar and then a couple of students. And they're gonna do a whole education segment on what happens out there. So they said they would let us know when it's gonna air. We'll make sure that we get that footage to all of you. And we had one of our students out there that's in the marketing pathway flying the drone. So the guy who was doing the stuff for the news station, he asked if they could share footage, if he could have some of the drone footage, and we thought that was kind of cool, too. So, the Padawatami Zoo came and visited the Jag classes and then anyone interested in going into zoology. We think of the zoo being great for the younger kids, and it is, but our kids loved it. They had a blast. And for those that are looking into that, I think it was very informative for them. We had several students, I think about 14, 15, participate in the Be a Teacher Day in Indy. Our eighth grade is doing Promote a Business every Friday. Missy Kreik put out there that if any businesses wanted to promote it in town, to send their information. And so an eighth grade teacher will wear their T-shirt and promote what that business is all day long. We had Woodlawn employees come in and share with the principals of healthcare classes. And then we hosted the Veterans Day program as well, which our band and choir performed at. And then we had five students that were able to share about a veteran that was close to them or that they wanted to honor, and that was very special. What we have coming up, we have a blood drive December 8th. December 11th, the jazz band concert. December 12th, the choir concert. December 18th, the RMS and RHS band concert. We have a semi-formal dance on December 16th. And starting very soon after break, we have the staff 10 days of taste temptation, which is a very big deal. Every department brings in food every day and it's fantastic. So that's what we have to look forward to, and pants that don't fit.
Eat first when the social studies department is up.
Yeah, social department.
Social studies department struggles.
Bad.
One year, one of them, this is kind of a funny story. One year, one of them was like, well, nobody eats bananas, so they just brought a couple of bananas. So the office staff, we went to Kroger and bought ice cream and all of the stuff to make banana splits because that person just thought he'd get to take his bananas back home. He was bound and determined to make sure that did not happen.
Any questions?
We had our book fair last week, so shout out to Mrs. Thomas for putting that on. I know it's a lot of work, and we had our family night, and our special area teachers also had a showcase during that. And thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, for all your help with the accounting of that. Each grade level was able to meet for a half a day last week to continue to adjust their reading curriculum to align with science of reading, so thank you, Mrs. Vance, for allowing that to happen. Coming up, we have our fourth grade concert at the high school on the 14th. Our Bachman, Barkman Optimus Fund is continuing to collect cereal for the local food pantry. And on December 11th, that week, we'll be taking our middle of the year eye ready. We'll share that data, I think, in the March study session.
Thank you. Any questions? Still not letting out the title of this year's book?
Say that again, now?
We're not letting out the title of this year's.
Oh, absolutely not. Top secret.
Mr. Slater?
The past month, a lot of the stuff that we've completed are things that I kind of mentioned we had coming up this month, so it might sound a little bit familiar, but we completed our fire safety with the Rochester Fire Department. They came out, set up the, the fire house, and we brought, we took every kid, including daycare kids, through that. At least, not the infants, but the ones that we were able to. We're continuing with our zebra zones. They're a great event that our kids really look forward to. Our staff does a great job with it. Cindy Gutman leads that up, and she has a good amount of staff members that participate and puts some extra. amount of staff members that participate and puts some extra time in to making sure that that happens. We also purchased zebra zone shirts for all of our students, and every kid was able to take home that shirt, and they wear them on zebra zone days. We got our veterans lunch and our veterans concert, our veterans lunch, we had fifty-plus veterans attend, it was a very well-attended event, and the lunch was fantastic. The veterans concert was packed, the, there weren't many seats, if any, that were even open, we had all six of our first grade classes participate in that, and doing that at the high school really brings another level to, to that performance, and we've got a lot of positive feedback for that. We took our zebra zone celebration kids, as part of our PBIS program, to the park and to the fire station as a reward for them. We've completed some CPI training over the past week, and upcoming, we've got another zebra zone coming up, we have kindergarten concert in December, that's our holiday concert, and on December sixth, we will be taking our zebra zone winners to Nubiano's so that they can learn how to make pizzas.
Any questions for Mr. Slater?
I want to thank everybody for the work that you do, and I hope that everybody has a blessed Thanksgiving. I think that we're all ready for that break and ready to go.
Mrs. Murphy gave me her notes.
Oh, bless your heart, thank you, I'm sorry.
I'll try to be a slayer, I'm a turd.
Okay.
So since the last meeting, the Halloween dance was a huge success, the haunted locker room was a big hit, I need longer arms, teachers and students worked hard to make a huge haunted locker room that was designed to go through both locker rooms, and it was awesome, she says. Sixth and seventh grade field trips to Honeywell to see the play The Lightning Thief, and it went very well. Veterans Day lunch at RMS served over fifty veterans over three lunch periods, and it was a great time. The Veterans Day program at the high school went well. Fax and student council had a successful canned food and pantry drive benefiting Matthews Market. Middle school math teachers met with Mrs. McLaughlin to work on and discuss curriculum and aligning progress monitoring with iReady and upcoming adoptions. Coming up, student councils adopting three Miracle Tree families and going shopping for them, wrapping gifts, delivering them back to Shepherds. Second iReady test will be given mid-December, and they have started planning for the annual etiquette luncheon, and all board members should have received their invitations.
Thank you.
She's at the conference, so thank you.
Thank you all, have a great Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you.